Yeah, it's in the wrong spot.
Oh, it's not.
Well, yeah, that's what I was doing.
Okay, so it looks like we're well represented here, so let's start the meeting. Betsy, are you ready to...
To do the roll call? Yes. So, President, our Dick Bennett, John Allen.
Here.
B Davis.
Here.
Tara Timble.
Here.
Kathleen Darby.
Here.
Scott Badger.
Here.
Betsy Harding. And Larry Seaver.
Okay, so let's see, we have one. An alternate will have to sit back if we get any major votes.
It doesn't matter, I don't care. It's D.R., it doesn't matter.
Very controversial ones coming up.
I really don't think so. How do we look?
I'm ready.
Do we have any exceptions, friends?
I have seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We've accepted the minutes. So now, in the public comment section, which we put the beginning, I'd like to deal with a proposal that's come up at Black Mountain to build out the remaining unbuilt upon lots. And I dug out one of our old plots, and it's, they're over here, and the squares, because it's common land with both duplex and single units. They've just come in to check to see if it all looks okay to us. I believe they've gone to the fire chief, the road agent, and the building inspector, and they all just said, "Looks fine to us, but put it out to the planning board." I don't see any issues. I've got a stack...
What, Saman?
No, go ahead.
Isn't there not a note that they have to upgrade the road?
No, see, now, I went through this, and because, well, when Randy's house went in up there, they've been using that road ever since, so it's been accepted as...
I think it's something to be bothered, no?
They've gone to the association, and the association is fine with the gravel road.
I mean, Black Mountain Road, not the condo road, because it's already...
Oh.
The town road, Dick.
Oh, the town Black Mountain Road, that I saw signed off on, I can't remember which page, but I read through all this stuff, and at some point, they signed off, I think it was to Fleet Bank, that that work had been done. And it was all about the roadway and the edges of the road. I have that, actually.
I will check on that.
I've got a question, too. So, this was an approved subdivision in 1985?
Eighty-six.
Okay, it has eighty-five on there.
Yeah, that's when they did it.
And then...
It's approved, I think, in eighty-six, if you'd like to...
Then how many are built, and how many...
If I was silent, eighty-six.
How many are built, and how many do they want to build?
There are five unbuilt upon...
Oh, those are those last five there?
Is it?
Okay.
On the east or west?
It's on the west side. Same side as the other buildings. It's above them, and where that kind of end of the improved road is.
So, that would be Whitney Hill Road, they're going to...
No, they're coming up...
Well, the west is...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was saying, the west side of this road.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, let's, we'll try to get our drive in straight.
Well, that's...
Okay. Here we are, coming in off of Black Mountain Road, right?
The east side.
It's the east development, right, the east side development. The west was over there. These are built, and this is the proposal for five, five.
Five, yeah, five.
Yeah, that's five.
Okay. There's a sixth designated. Do you know if that's still... Oh, no, no, this one's been built here, so it's this five.
They're building one now.
They're redoing a foundation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's these five here.
And then, there are two here that have not been built either.
And there's two down there.
Are they going to do that, Tab?
Well, it's not like a they.
Oh.
John is selling the individual house sites.
Okay.
So, somebody bought fifteen and sixteen. They are choosing to do a single family. He's interested in seventeen, eighteen. He's interested in doing a duplex, so it's not like a developer, it's whoever buys the lot.
And then the association owns the whole land?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Association, free from the maintenance. I spoke to the association president. He's fine with everything, you know, keeping the road as gravel as it is, and then come on board once it's occupied.
And the road agent didn't have any problem with the road?
The road agent, as the road agent said, it's a private road, he had no issue. As a fire chief, he had no problem with the road, he just asked it would, you know, it would be, I would be doing the second unit up to make sure that the driver is wide enough so that he can have the turn around.
Right.
So, that was his only, his only concern. Other than that, he was, he was fine with the gravel and finishing it up.
The original approval of this was for cluster?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So, you're proposing to actually construct five units? No?
Just, yeah.
Just two?
Two units would be one building.
One duplex, okay. Two units for the duplex.
Oh, two, two units in one building?
It's one building, right. It's approved, but each one of those boxes is approved as a duplex, right.
But if someone wanted to, they could put a single family.
And that, correct. The foundation that was there that was removed and others, a single going in there, that started a year ago, that started off as a two, two units, and I may end up putting a single in.
And for the record, I'm sorry, can I have your name, please?
I'm sorry, Morris Caruso.
M.O.R.R.I.S.?
No, Morris, M.A.U.I.
Sorry.
I.C.
Okay, and the last name still?
Caruso, C.A.R. U.S.O.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have a copy of the original subdivision plan agreement?
Well, I've got as much documentation as I can dig out.
Okay, that would be interesting.
And there are minutes from the, mostly minutes from the planning board, because it went through bankruptcy, and then there was, Fleet Bank took over, and then it went to auction, and John Pitera.
Was that when Watson and Jones owned it?
Well, that's when it started, and then, and then Fleet Bank, and then John.
Yeah. I will check on the thing that can do.
So, Sarah will be our, here's her name in the minutes of the nineteen ninety-one meeting.
I was going to say, I wasn't on the board.
And we expect you to remember everything.
I'll refresh you. But I don't think there were any issues with the plan, you know, it just never got built out.
Sometimes they like require upgrades of surrounding roads in order to make it work type thing, is that, is that a notion?
Well, that's what these documents went through. On-site review, roadway and drainage improvements, high pastures at Black Mountain. And it's pretty well, you know, they had, okay, a letter of credit for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Complete, complete a large portion of the remaining water. Erosion, finished east brothers, shoe house road, complete the drainage, construct the water to, oh, to draw in, and that, I guess, he must get his water something for himself. He must get his water something for himself now.
Drew. Drew, why are we having to hit it?
Because there was a well...
They hitched John, and we hitched John because they polluted our spring.
This one over here, or was it the one that was down in there? Anyway.
It's small.
B's a neighbor, she's... In nineteen eighty-five, we didn't require, and you're not going to like me asking this question, we didn't require paved roads, or highway specs, or town specs for subdivision?
We still don't have to have a paved road.
If you're going to ask the town to take the road over, then you have to...
It has to be paved.
Oh.
You're just going to have it as a private road, and keep it as a private road.
See, that spring there, they polluted it, they killed my plant.
Whoever has...
That came from, I think Bergeron designed the road.
Drewman gives the water from there, too.
So, there was the spec for the road built.
So, they plowed that themselves, then?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess somebody does east, and somebody does west.
I don't know if Black Mountain does both of them, and what's the matter?
Anyway, as far as people can think, do you see any hitches in the ongoing process? I mean, they're going to have to do septs, right? They're going to create... Yeah, septic design has to be done, but water, there's a water system that you tie into the... Yeah.
But basically, this is continuing the already approved plan from centuries ago.
Is there any kind of sunset on...
Yeah, that's what I wonder, too.
It seems to me it's not even a planning board issue, it's just a building permit.
Yeah. Kevin Bennett just wanted it to come through us.
Why, it's a good idea that he checked with us.
Because, you know...
Yeah, makes sense.
The planning board did so much at the beginning of it, he thought it was a good idea to bring it up again, and...
Do you know the answer to this question, Betsy, of is there a sunset provision on any subdivision?
I believe not. You know, if it's written into the, it might be written into the wording of the approval that it has to be done in five years or something, but I don't think...
Right. Yeah, that we have it in our subdivision regs.
All it is, is in the beginning, if you don't, if you have a subdivision, then don't do anything.
Right.
Then if your approval lapses, this has had work on it, so ongoing...
They just blew the house.
And they're, they're building on a existing foundation there now.
I want to see if the planning board can... How big is the lot that these are, just out of curiosity?
Ninety-eight acres?
And is it just, is it, you own the footprint, or do you own some land?
Well, the way it works, I understand, is you go out there, I guess it's ten feet around the perimeter of the foundation.
Okay.
And that's what becomes, yeah, you do an asphalt, that becomes, that becomes part of the deed. And I believe the asphalt actually even comes to the planning board. Because what I saw of the previous asphalt, when I looked through the file, that that asphalt gets a bit of the wood, and I don't know what you do with it, but that's what I saw. Well, it just gets filed in our files, so we have a record of... What's going on, because that gets recorded at the registry. What went in the ground, what's really there. Right. And so, what transfers, when you sell it, is that, that footprint of building out the lot, and then the association owns the lot. I think that's the answer.
The blood.
Yeah, I think, I don't see any real hitches. Will you send a letter or something to Kevin, so he knows that he can go ahead? I will speak with him personally. But we'll have it in our minutes at this meeting, so we can always fall back on that, although we shouldn't have to. Okay. So, is there anything else I can suggest I didn't speak to, any other more they should speak to, or just move on? I don't think so. I think we've spoken with all the right people, the road agent, the fire chief, the building inspector, and us. John's a selectman, so, you know, he has that on him, but I think we've covered it. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck with it. So, I have the new plans from, I mean, the plot from, I'm a new supervisor, revised plans for Ann Peterson's...
Scott, could you pass me the...
Lot line adjustments that we looked at last month. Bob was not going to represent Ann, and Ann was going to represent herself at this meeting, but I don't see... Do we need a representative in order to go through this now? I believe it's all in place.
I think since we've had someone presenting before, we don't need it now.
We didn't have someone presenting before.
Well, didn't we have some...
At the last meeting? Nobody was here.
We just looked at it so we could say, it needs to be done.
Okay, I was thinking that they addressed our questions, but you're right. But I don't think it's any regulation that you have to have somebody here.
Somebody here.
No, I don't believe so either, but I didn't want to... Okay, that's the Mylar, if we go through the approval. So, one of the questions was fourteen A and B, one and two. There was an old designation and a new designation, and they've changed it up here in this block so that it's consistent with what's on the... I'm going to get out the... So, we went down, then we had a question at number five, tax mat and lot number, and that was the fourteen one and two, fourteen A and B, and that's now been straightened Boundary, okay, down to thirteen, boundary survey, including variance and distances for all lot lines for current imposed. We have that now.
Yeah, there was an issue over here, I thought.
Well, we were confused, they had colors.
Right.
And that was hard to...
Do they just get one? Usually we have five, five, obviously.
Yeah. We'll get five before we stamp any. Okay, so there's that. Then our next...
They did change the dotted lines, I see.
Yeah.
It's hard to delineate.
Well, you know, it's funny, because I then looked at it in daylight in here, and it was perfectly clear. There's something about the...
Lights.
Yeah, color quality of the slate that we weren't picking off the difference between their red and their purple, and...
If you're colorblind, you wouldn't see any.
That's when he became a black and white photographer. Location of existing imposed water supplies.
Yeah, that building didn't have well or septic, the second one.
It's got a septic system right there.
Oh, do they now? Okay, that wasn't there before.
They went, I asked them to put all that stuff in, and the second was coming.
I don't know where the well is.
Yeah, they don't show that yet, but they might.
It's a water, no, it's a water line from...
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's two big circles there. That one circle up there, is that indicated?
Well, existing, so did they run the line?
So, is this the water line?
Maybe it is, because it says W.
W, 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 W.
There's got to be a W somewhere down below.
To the second.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, that was, okay, eighteen sewers and septics, I think they put them in. Nineteen, location and names of all existing streets. That was Wendy Hills Road.
How many septics this one, did I say?
I think there's two.
Okay, I see the two, I just wanted to make sure.
There's this one, and these are the two dwelling units.
Oh, okay. There's a garage, don't there?
Here?
Yeah, there's a water line going into the...
And it's probably the same, using the same septic.
Yeah, there's a one coming up.
Because there's a water line going into the garage.
And then there's two lines going out.
Coming out.
Yeah, and there's two septic lines going out. Everything else is checked off. Now, do you want me to go through the whole thing, or are we pretty happy enough with it? And then I will just get the five copies here, and I believe that we still needed the twenty-five dollar check, or thirty-five, whatever it is, to register it. And we will get that before the... All right.
So, this is a septic?
Well, now we are going to make all those proper notifications, if you care about
So, according to the checklist, this is a completed application, except for the money.
We got all the money for office fees, it was just a glitch for a separate check.
Separate check for the...
For Kevin.
For the registry.
We've got a nice deposit.
We accept the application condition on four additional copies of the plot.
All in favor? You finished. And now, we roll it up.
I just intend to get a deed.
I think you have to get, let me just get it out of the county, or, I don't know.
So, we've accepted it as a complete application, and then we need to vote to approve it?
Oh, right.
That's what we normally do?
We have to do both things. Vote to approve.
I'll make the motion to vote to approve said application. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved.
That seems sort of like a silly step, but it's what we've been doing.
So, in order to get a deed, don't you just go to the county registry and get a copy of the deed, or?
You should be able to do that.
Yeah, because they have all the stamped deeds down there.
Yeah.
And I think you just get a copy, I think it may cost you five bucks or something, but...
And the town gets a copy, right? They should, they owe you.
Want to get set up here?
No, I don't think so. I don't believe that in your records, there's a copy of the deed.
Here?
Here.
We normally do keep a copy of the deed here.
We do.
Mine does, both of my buildings do, in the form...
Yeah, they should be... They should be sending them back, stamped with the page and whatever.
So, the registry does?
Registry sends it back.
If that's come back.
Yep.
Does the registry also keep the copy?
Yes.
Well, they, and they asked me about it, so... So, we should contact the county and say, "Send all those deeds up to us." Or do we have to pay for a copy of the deed?
I didn't think, I didn't think the town could even make the... Yeah, I think that's part of the fees that people pay, but are you thinking that the town does not have a copy, a copy of? No, they don't.
Which do you...
A lot line adjustment last year. I know the state and the county's slow, but... Because we, and we save one, and we're like, so that's why.
So, those are the appointment letters. You now have to go to the county court and be sworn.
sworn out.
I was just gonna say the same thing. Line up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So does that fill our roster?
There's still one short, I think.
Aren't we two short?
We're a couple short of alternates. I don't think that we've ever had all the possible alternates.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, we just lost them in the last couple of years, right?
Right. I think we did.
Yeah, we've always had them.
Yeah.
Well, since I've been on the board, we had them.
Yeah.
We don't see Mike in a lot.
We need more controversial issues, right?
Yeah, that will get people...
I didn't bring that list, but I know there's a vacancy, at least one in the alternate spot, maybe two.
Two.
Anybody comes up with a...
I call people if they are refused.
Yeah.
Don't we only have two?
I've done some polling, and I said three.
I almost had one.
We're allowed to have five alternates.
Five, so there are three positions.
So there may be three alternate positions available.
So you think we've had five?
Yeah, oh, we have.
We did, at one point, we have a lot.
Wow.
Yeah. I just think we lost in recently, in the last year or two, we lost a few people. I'm trying to think who was the other alternate we lost. I know Dave Treadwell, oh, Ray Abbott stepped down, but he was an alternate.
George.
George Howard, actually, he resigned, that's right, George.
I asked Steve Leader a while ago, he said he'd think about it. It'd be good to get another person who knows about building, I mean, you do.
He was, yeah, when we did the last master...
I don't remember, he might well have been.
When we did the last master plan, he was on the board.
Yeah, it'd be great to get an additional builder on, who knows the ropes, so to speak.
Could ask my brother, if he'd be interested.
Well, he's fire department, so...
Mike Gordon.
Angus.
Angus is in the fire department?
No.
No, he's on the school board at one point.
It'd be great to get him to join.
Yeah.
Doesn't he have enough to do?
I don't know, I'll ask him.
I'm being sarcastic, being a doctor, you think you have enough to do?
Well, being on the call, maybe, in the ship bar. Having poor kids, too, might...
He's one of those ghost towns.
Helping some folks.
Yeah. Makes a heck of a room.
Clear.
Maybe Rachel.
Yeah, actually, that's a good idea. Ask her first, actually. Angus tends to go on when he starts talking.
Ooh, that's being recorded.
Upper Saco Valley Land Trust has this on their mailing list. Does anybody support them? Oh, this came to you.
What is it?
Oh, they're having, this weekend, they have a art show.
Can't open it, so it's not a letter bomb.
No, they still like you.
I think it's 'cause they must have you on record as being chair, you were chair for quite a few years.
And so they're having their art show, I think, this weekend, Saturday, down in Tin Mountain.
Right, tomorrow night, it starts.
Is that one in?
This is opening tomorrow night, yep.
They seem to be a nice organization, and they want any of their annual report. I have here their appeal for money, and it's really nice, nicely done, which interests me.
Right. I never had enough.
Not surprised. That's been done. Okay, on with the master plan.
A question, are you still accepting edits to the comments?
Sure. Sure, yeah, I haven't published it, um, yet, so great.
Survey?
The survey is what you mean, right? Great.
We had a deadline, and I thought we all failed to meet it.
Take yourself out.
I think we did, all of us.
Right after that deadline, I went to California, so I think we're in a grace period.
Grace period.
That's good.
Great, they'll get it to me soon, that'd be great.
So how was it going through the old master plan? And seeing which sections we liked and which sections we've changed the wording? Was that a good form? Who's the word?
I guess it was.
I got reports from everybody, I thank both the Julys in the office and all the department heads for getting this done for me. Yeah, I got updated reports.
Yeah, speedy.
It was speedy, very impressive, and I read them all, you know, need to tweak probably a little bit, but... I know Kathy mentioned something to me today about, you know, were these supposed to have some kind of future forethought or future improvements to things in here as well? Some people did include some ideas, I didn't know if there was a format that maybe we wanted to follow that might wanna do that or not do that, or whatever the...
Well, unless it ends up in the goals section, that was my...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I noticed that there was a goal section in there, but anyways, I got, you know, eight reports here, I was eight for eight. Pretty exciting.
And they were on what, what was your...
Pages twenty-eight to forty-two, or something like that.
Is that the same?
I had administrative services, facilities, town finances, highway department, police department, fire department, emergency medical, Jackson Water Police, and solid waste.
But...
So this is one...
One of each of those.
One pile of all the...
Right, I can make copies, I can make copies for people. I'm sure we're gonna have to read them all and edit.
Were these based on what was in here or before?
What I did was I gave them a copy of what was in here before, and said, you know, you know, I gave them their artistic delight there to modify it to where they wanted.
So they took the original and tweaked it?
And tweaked it.
Rather than writing something new?
Right, and some people came with a totally different format, some people followed the format that was already there. I really don't care what way the other's lost is done.
And I would assume those are all available or...
Probably not yet.
I mean, as far, not on the website, but they, they could, I mean, so if they...
I think all except for the end, those ones came via the email. Hope you can scan that one in.
Because I'm, I'm willing...
Nice to save some paper.
I'm willing to do the editing, put the whole thing together.
There you go.
Yeah, you want it.
Yeah, we can do that.
I've had natural resources, I've been working on it, I don't have a completed yet. I've gotta do a little bit more research and get some more data. And I have the school, and I'm not finished with mine yet either. I have an appointment tomorrow with Dick's wife at the school. So I have a lot of different wording and plans that I would like to do than what is in here. Um, and I also would like to make a suggestion, I don't quite know how to say this. I went online, and I looked at a couple of master plans from other towns, and I liked the way it was formatted and how it was very much updated as far as visually looking. I'm not talking about the wording in any way, shape, or form. We have just recently put a beautiful town report out. You go on the website, and our website for the town of Jackson is really up to date and gorgeous looking. And so is the schools, 'cause I'm interested in the school right now. And I thought that possibly, um, we could do the same thing with our master plan, because it makes, people want to look at it and read it, as opposed to just having blacks and whites and not very... Just because of what's going on today, okay, this is a lot different than it was ten years ago.
Stop staring at me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyhow, what I was getting at is, I used to do this for a living. I had my own advertising agency, and I did things like this and all kinds of other things. And I would really like to offer my services for free to do it again. And if that's okay with everybody. I mean, I'm not doing the rewording or anything like that.
I was offering to do the editing of words.
Well, that's why I get that, to get that, so the whole thing's consistent.
More formatting.
Mine is more formatting, yes. And then, before anything gets finalized or anything else, confer with everybody, and...
Agreed, I did.
And the only thing is, we would have to pay for colored photographs, you know, when you were to print them up. But the best way to do that is when you have a sheet of paper going under like this, it costs less to have it done on two pages, 'cause it's all one page, and then it's totally everything, so that's the way, it's saving money that way. I don't know how much is allowed for, we've allotted for having this done. But anyway, that is my...
Agreed, I did.
Kathleen, I have some marvelous ideas, if I can be of any useful...
Oh, I'm gonna call you all.
No, it would look nice with color and illustration and pictures.
And again, I think if we're focusing on the meat of it, we can do the background, that can be on color on the web or something like that, we don't need to have the expense of that. But if we make the meat of the really, the master plan itself really terrific, I think it's just, that's the ought to be in doing it, it's not all that expensive.
Okay, if you look on Freedom's website, on Freedom Master Plan, it's gorgeous, let's put it that way. There's a lot of photographs in there, it's visually very nice looking, and it's on the website, so... Just because our website now looks really great, it would be really nice to have the master plan on the website looking great.
If you look at this, yeah, it's a hard read, because it's just a read.
It's boring, and nobody's gonna read it, yeah.
Pictures would really pick up the...
Yeah, well, when you do any kind of advertising, the first thing people do is look at a picture. Then they may read the headline, sub-headline, and then they might read the rest of the article. But the picture is what captures there.
That's the hook.
That's the hook.
There is a town, I forget what the name of it is, but I remember reading about a town in southern New Hampshire that their whole master plan was one big sheet of paper that was the map of the town, and the roads and so on, and they had, you know, little boxes saying, for natural resources, this is what we want, and for human resources, or whatever. So they just had it, um, a very graphic setup, and I don't know, we could even consider something as, you know, different as that.
What about a pop-up master plan?
A pop-up, why not? With rivers, yes, mountains, yeah.
Dora the Explorer.
Okay, well, I think it's great to bring some new ideas to it.
Okay. I'll pursue that then.
I had, we, we, we gave it a large section, we voted for you, we're gonna... I had, I had history and recreation and cultural activities, I've pretty much got the history updated. There's nothing, you know, this history is just leave it alone. It brings us from sixteen hundreds to the present day, or two thousand and three. So I, I worked on the two thousand and three to now, just pointing out the major things that have occurred, but I'd love to go over it and see what I missed, and, and then, when I looked at recreation and cultural activities, I don't like that section. It's just fluff. If you go to page forty-seven, it's just, it's a lot of fluff. And, 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 and I, like, crossed out, you know, it has to be updated, but I crossed out a whole bunch of it, and, and I haven't done anything with it, because I, I wasn't sure, but it's a real fluff section. And, and it's not, but it, it, it almost as if it was written for people coming to town and tourists, and I'm not sure if that, that should be the intended purpose. This is, this is a master plan, and it's okay to point out what's here in town and what's, you know, I, I'm, I'm not really sure how to rewrite this, but the second paragraph, I'd just remove the town experiences because I don't agree with it entirely. The third, fourth, fifth, under Winter Black Mountain, I just have to speak with John Fuchera, make sure that that's accurate, but do we wanna put that in there? Jackson ski touring, I'd have to speak with Brienne to see if that's accurate. There's this little next paragraph, the town maintains a small ice skating rink in the center of the village for public skating, which is nice. Ice skating is also available on the Pounds at Nesselug Farm, which has adopted architectural styles reminiscent of earlier times. That's a nice fluffy thing to put in there, but, but that's all it is. And then, we're not certain of their future, so I remove that, but mentioning the ice skating rink is fine.
So they have one at Pointe de Reville, which he said the town could use.
Oh, he does have one now, doesn't he?
Yes, he offered it to the town.
Oh, did he offer it to the town? See, I didn't know something like that, so that, that'll, I'm gonna...
Made properly with a good jam.
Okay, all right.
They had board to because of fluke something.
Okay. So I'll ask Kim about that, to double check with him. A little piece, horseback riders have a choice of trails at Nesselug, which I don't think they do anymore, but we could put black if...
I checked that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, they have sleigh rides.
Yeah, I checked that.
Um, but if we're gonna do this, I'd like to add something in here with the chamber, I mean, we have the duck race, the art festival, the, you know, so their cultural events, so I'd like to check with Kathy.
Historical society.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, and that, and that, I added down here, I wrote in the museum of the White Mountains.
Right.
Because...
And it's at the town hall, please stop calling at the old town hall, it's...
It's the town hall, yeah. And then it says nearby attractions include Storyland Heritage and the Mount Washington Auto Road, that should be, I just think that should be removed. We don't need to put nearby, it's not in Jackson. Yeah, so I put in museum of the White Mountains, and I'd like to add the, so that's just my thoughts on it, I'd like to add some of the chambers. You know, it's just a fluff piece, this, but, but nevertheless, let's put the cultural activities and recreation, and then I thought of adding, there's more hiking with a trail on Graze Inn property, and, you know, more, and Prospect Farm, mention that, which isn't here necessarily.
Well, isn't the, um, the background information, as I understand it, is really there to sort of inform people about why we've come up with what we have, to whatever extent is useful, I mean, um, so for example, um, in that recreational cultural activity section, um, we're kind of proving that we need to have hiking trails as part of our land use and that kind of thing. Is that how other people...
That's how, that's more how I see it, is what, you know, this is a master plan of what do we want in the next ten years, but it's also not bad to say what we have.
Right, the facts are important.
To some, yeah.
To some extent, trying to lead to where we...
Wanna go.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the background is all support for all the goals that we have, so if we have a recreation goal, then we could go to the back, to the recreation section, and see what we have, and then, so the goals then we've carried from what we have now, looking into the future.
Yeah, I think that would really use us.
That's what is our direction.
So, yeah, thanks, well, it just gives me an idea of what to do with that, I wasn't quite sure. Whereas the other piece, that I was asked to do the history, I could quick, give you, it's not that big, I could read it quickly. Over the past twelve years, the town has actively improved many of its buildings. In two thousand and seven, the fire department added a fourth bay for an additional fire truck, and later increased and improved office space for the fire chief, and newly created position of fire inspector. This is not history, but it's important to have. And two thousand and eight, the Jackson, this is history, in two thousand and eight, the Jackson Historical Society had the foresight to remove and preserve the Tricky Barn located on Jackson Grammar School property, allowing for the expansion and remodeling of the school. This also created space for the Whitney Community Center, a gift from Betty Whitney to be added for the use of school in town, in the town for larger events. Later in two thousand and ten, in conjunction with the library, the Tricky Barn was rebuilt and beautifully outfitted to become the new home of the Jackson Public Library on Graze Inn property. And between two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, the voters approved a one point two million dollar bond to develop the Graze Inn property to house... to house a much-needed new town garage and salt shed. Meanwhile, under the guidance of Warren Schoenmaker, the Jackson Historical Society undertook the revitalization of the town hall and its grounds beside the Wildcat River. In August two thousand and eleven, Jackson was struck by tropical storm Irene, damaging many roadways and bridges, as well as forever-changing riverbanks throughout the town. With the aid of fifty-two thousand dollars in federal emergency funds, the road crew, under the supervision of J. Henry, rebuilt major sections of Dundee Road, as well as mitigating damages to bridges and watercourses. And then I just put in, in two thousand and twelve, the old library committee was formed, and to date, they have turned the beautiful Stanford White Building into a meeting room, working with the Protestant Chapel Association to create a bathroom and a safe environment for future use. That is the ones I have, I'm not sure if I've missed any. I've got Whitney, and the school, and the old library, the town hall, the new library.
Is there anything at all in there about the transfer station, or is that a separate...
It's a separate, yeah. What about Jackson Falls, the improvements you did on Jackson Falls?
Right.
It should be in the history. I mean, I could quickly mention it and I read it.
We pay conservation for it?
As much as I'd like to give us credit, I don't...
Well, somehow, one of the things we need to convey, you know, when you look through the goals, we're getting across that the village has a certain character and so on, so in part of what we're doing in the background, we have to try to figure out how we can describe that character, so that as we're trying to develop...
Okay, the falls would help in that.
It's part of Hurricane Irene damage, too.
Yeah.
The historic district, when was that?
That was in the old master plan, and it's in there. Yeah, yeah, it must have been two thousand and two or three.
Right, I bet it was. Great. Kathleen, were there other towns that had really good master plans? I tried to find some and didn't find any, but you mentioned Freedom.
I know there's another one that I'm looking for somebody to do one for them, at Hillside or Hillborough, wherever it's called. I had looked on the New Hampshire...
I know Albany's been working on theirs, and it's not on their website yet, and I called Bartlett Town Offices to find out, and she simply laughed at me.
The one that was done down at Freedom was done in two thousand and eight.
Okay.
That's the one that was done in two thousand and eight.
Well, I'll call Albany and see if when theirs will be ready to be examined, because I know they've just completed it or almost completed it.
Well, also, Freedom reminded me kind of, like, Jackson's a really small, small little town, they do do a lot of tourist stuff, and have an aging population, if you read the, you know...
Yeah.
And it has the history, like, the cute little charm that this does, so that's the one I thought, well, more like it.
Albany may not be so similar in some ways, but it does have so much of the land and national forest, that there's a similarity there, maybe.
Yeah.
So that's interesting, too.
They have the almost exact population and the same size, and the same amount of national forest.
They may not have a nice little...
But they have no village.
Village center, right.
Yeah, Freedom has that little cute little village.
Right.
Would you consider the comment...
But I will look at, excuse me, I will look at other ones online.
Let me know if you find some, I'd love to see them, too.
Okay.
Like the comments about the library, put under the library. I'm seeing that writing modern history is a little...
It's difficult. Well, you know, I didn't want to put people in, because, like, I almost thought, you know, the, you know, put the passing of Betty Whitney, or a few well-known people, but that suddenly...
Where do you start?
Where do you, yeah, right, who's more important than whom, and, you know, so that, you know, modern history is, you know, we are part of modern history, all of us at this table. And yet, none of us would want to give themselves that kind of credit, but we are, you know, the residents of the town today. So that, that I stayed away from, but the buildings, like, you know, because in the master plan, the last one, you know, that was what they were hoping to do, and they did it. You know, they did build the library, they, you know, did increase the school and build the Whitney Center and...
I don't think it matters if it's redone again, or revisited again, under the library section, or under other sections as well.
There'll be a lot of duplications.
Yeah, there, yeah, there might be.
Well, so, maybe somebody's only gonna read about the library, not read about the history, though. I mean, it could be reworded, anyway. I don't know, I like seeing it, I just like the way you wrote that.
Me, too. Good thoughts.
It doesn't really matter, anyway, the stairs can redo it, anyway. I'd like to redo it, I'm just gonna...
My way. Well, on the Conservation Commission, I've written a few things, but there are two people on there that really write well on the board. And what I thought, I wrote fairly well, they apparently didn't. And it was, but it was, but it was interesting to see, you know, I would write down ideas of what I thought, and they took it and changed it completely. Signage up here on Gray's Inn, and a few things we did for Prospect, and they did such a better job. I, there was nothing I could say, but, you know, you guys here, here's a draft, take it and do something with it then, and, you know, so if anyone feels...
That's really the way to do it, is if you get the ideas down, if somebody, you know, just has the ideas, and he doesn't really want to spend the time to wordsmith it, you know, just put the ideas down however you want, and the people, you know, like...
So I'll throw this out here, and if anybody wants to wordsmith it, go for it, you know, no offense, no hard feelings. I'm not a wordsmith, apparently. Then, the one thing I see, I read the entire, for the first time, sorry, guys, master plan, and I went through it in pretty great detail. And the one thing I see, the most important part, unfortunately, we worked on it a lot, was the goals, but we didn't have the build-out analysis yet. And now that we do, we have to completely rewrite that, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, I think we're going to want to spend some time again on the goals.
Yeah, that's the important part.
But maybe that should wait until we've got our background.
Everything else is done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the far-reaching thoughts of the whole master plan.
Right.
Well, the goals to analyze the future land use with the second section, which we haven't even gone through yet, which we said we were gonna wait until we got the background and the survey and the build-out. They have that on the Freedom website, on their master plan, there's graphs and circles, and I don't know who did it, but it has all that population and all the rest of that stuff on there, which we, which we got out of the build-out analysis, so that does need to be incorporated in there.
Did you see that they had done one, a build-out analysis, or?
I don't know if they had done one or not. I was just a quick glancing through it, and reading some about the history, and looking at the pretty picture, and looking at the format. I just did that today, by the way, I was like... And I thought, oh, we could do this.
What's next, Chief? So can we get an electronic copy sent to us of...
I got that down.
Okay, and I'll, should I do the same with what I?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think anytime you put it electronically, it's easier for everybody else to pull it out.
Yeah, well, I did it on the computer, so...
Well, that's wonderful, I think we did a lot of work tonight, already. What do you think?
Yep. It's snowing out there.
Snowing again.
Isn't it nice?
Isn't it great to come home this spring?
Amazing. January, already.
You'll go from Mr. Mundy, bro.
I know, that's what I'm afraid of.
One day I'm raking, the next day I'm shoveling.
You'll find a salmon ax, it's a very hot summer.
All right.
Into extremes.
Well, we could be California, too, so...
Yeah, we could be drought here, so we'd be thankful for what we have.
I had a suggestion for California, instead of the oil pipeline coming down from Canada, they should have a water pipeline all the way down to California.
Little less dangerous if it spills.
Very true. All right, it's yours. All in favor?
I...
Any opposed?
How about the clocks, Paul?